All over, roll call. Tracy Bockowski, here. Rob Danelle, present. Tonya Bradsick, here. Craig Sims, here. Chris Dilbert, here. And Rachel Whatzep is here. Public hearings, we have none. Approval of the agenda?
Move is presented.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to carry. Public comments on agenda items made in the public. Approve, oh, sorry. Approval of the minutes. Regular meeting April 5th, 2022. Did everybody get a copy of that?
Yes.
Yep.
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Sustained.
No, for sustained. Motion to carry. Communication Correspondents Workshop, we have none. Matters for consideration, all business. Capital Improvement Plan Committee member, a top member, discussion in action. Chris was our initial appointment for the Capital Improvement Committee. And for reasons that I'll either let him share or not, he's no longer that person. And so we have to appoint another person to which, because of the timing of the meeting, Rob was our other person who was interested. Rob did attend, but he would like an official appointment from the commission. So I'll let Chris be first if you'd like.
I'm going to share with the commission. Do you know our receipt?
Oh. I was going for Andrew.
Now maybe thirty seconds to read it. So with this being said, I received this email unexpectedly. Removed me from that committee with the unfounded allegation that I was suing the village of Lick. According to this email, this information was given to the president by the village attorney. While I did have a conversation with the village attorney, a conversation that was initiated by him. The conversation never led to a lawsuit being filed. Somehow, he interpreted our, I thought was a very cordial conversation. He took it to the president that I was going to sue the village over the seven forty-seven acres. And therefore, I received this email from the president. And I, as you can see, Mrs. Bradsick was copied on this. She did reach out to me, and at the time, I wasn't going to fight it. And I said, "Let's find somebody to sit in, you know, my spot." And then she reached out to Mr. Danelle.
And the meeting was the twenty-first, so I heard from Jen the next day. And the meeting was that following day in the evening, so it wasn't a lot of...
Yeah, because this email was on the nineteenth.
Okay, so on that note, I did reach out to Rob, who was also volunteering at the time that Chris was also volunteering for the committee as the next choice. However, we have not formally appointed him, nor do I know if it's the will of the commission to continue, but we needed someone for that Thursday. Because as you can all see, the Capital Improvement Plan is on our desk for this evening. And that was the, which was that we'd be looking at tonight, so.
So as far as appointing me, I don't think it's particularly necessary at this point since it's, it hence over for this round of the program. But the program is very ongoing and very fluid, so we should have someone, that person ongoing at some point. As this will, will be back up again by fall, September, October, in preparation for the next year's budget. So I guess they start planning the budget in October. So this will come back to planning, you know, ongoing. So anybody more than welcome to take it over. But I don't see any sense of an appointment tonight for what's essentially over for this round.
Yeah, at the time that we discussed the reappointment, we were honestly all in ti... Well, in the three conversations that we were anticipating that this was going to be a long-term process, not a one-meeting process. So I get the impression after speaking to Rob, because he's going to present this tonight, that this is like a one-and-done meeting, so.
But when they reconvene in the future, do we want to make the appointment so when they...
That would be up to, I'm good with that, whatever the will is.
Why don't we do that?
Since the committee is supposed to be led by planning, and in which the time really was not there for a whole lot of anything as far as digging deeper than where it goes, and input from others, that, you know, I think it's a different, it's going to be a little bit different come the next time around.
Okay.
When more people will be probably involved and more input from everyone.
That's right.
And I know that REC got to input more because they, of their timing of their meeting. So their time, you know, they were meeting in between, where we just got to the point from appointing Chris, and then the first meeting came along, and there was, you know, no more meetings for planning till tonight.
So pleasure of the commission?
So you don't want the appointment now?
I don't think it's necessary for tonight. I think you can all kind of look at this and see if what you like, if it...
How about this, we'll move forward, and then if we want to revisit that, after you see where the process is and appointing for more long-term, then...
Chris's issue might be resolved by that.
Just a question, who to say that there's not going to be any more meetings until fall?
That's where I'm kind of, like, maybe we should dive into the Capital Improvement Plan and then make a decision. It sound, and let Rob share.
Okay. Is there a specific date that they're planning on having? Are they going to be like the Thursdays or Wednesday days?
This was it for right now.
For right, right. I know it's the last one on the plan, but...
And that, there was no future meetings at that meeting. The goal was to get this one done quickly so that they can put it into, here, I'll get into it.
Yeah, it'll depend on the day, but I can do it. I'd be willing to do it. But if it's on, that they end up being scheduled on a day, like Wednesday, I would be able to do it, so. I'd be a volunteer if otherwise.
Okay, well, I'm gonna hold on because we've got a couple items ahead of that, really quick. So update on the master plan was, it was passed by council and approved for distribution, so it's in the state of distribution and review.
So they haven't been distributed? Had been distributed?
Hope so. I reached out to Lori a couple times, she hasn't been on, so. I will do that again. I tried today, but I'll try again tomorrow. Still double-check on that.
So what's the schedule for the master plan now? It's sixty days that it's out for distribution, so I guess next week will be the first month, so it comes back to us in two months?
Yeah.
And then we pass it?
I think it's, yeah.
So after, yeah, then we just essentially do a final, like, public meeting type thing at the planning commission, and then we, the planning commission then adopts the master plan.
Is it a public meeting or just a regular meeting?
It's a, it's a public meeting. So you set something about like, probably fifteen days before, or you set a hearing before, and then, yeah, and then there'd be full adoption at that last meeting for the sixty-day part.
So I guess next month we would have to set a public hearing, okay.
And I think, you know, Rob, did you have anything you want to share about master plan stuff?
I still have some input I'd like to give you guys. I've been looking at zoning. Our maps are, if they're correct to the county, are a mess. I mean, they're not accurate. At all. I mean, I was just like, really? This says it's commercial, this, it's actually residential. This says, the plan says it's industrial, it's actually residential. It's all. So I don't, does that map generate from your system, the coloring of it?
So if it's the existing land use map, it's generated from BSNA, which then pulls whatever codifying language is for taxation, and it draws it from there, and that's how it determines what is commercial, residential, or whatever else. In terms of the zoning plan, it should be whatever was updated most recently, Jeff, and what was developed from what was, what we got from the records from the past for zoning. Whatever we've had a rezoning or anything like that, we either spot updated for when those things happen. Including if the county has anything else, which we had that one split that we were having issues with in terms of updating the map, and now we have a map that reflects the last split that happened along Grashit and the neighborhood there, so. But yeah, that's usually where the source data is, is that those two different sources.
Yeah, and it didn't make, make sense. I was kind of surprised that. And I mean, is that, so basically, there's the three maps, right? There's your, your future.
Your current zoning.
What is being used as today, and then what it's currently zoned as.
Yeah.
And that's where I was finding things that just didn't match up with the current.
Yeah, if you see those discrepancies, if there's something that's like glaring or whatever, feel free, if you can sit down and talk about, like, circle the parts that we're talking about, we can discuss it, and then I can research it, and then we can see if we need to update those things, so. And even if these discrepancies happen, like, even after the fact, we can still open it up, amend, and then put the correct information that's incorrect for a moment, so.
And the rate of taxes, it's regard, it's that. A piece of property that's owned, industrial versus residential, it doesn't make a difference as far as the millage. You're going to get hit with the same millage and the same rate, it's just whether you're getting a taxic, a homesteaded piece of property versus, the millage rate is different for a commercial property? The actual rate is?
You're paying, go on, John.
I was gonna say that, I think all three of us. Go ahead. I'll let John know.
Yeah, there are different rates for different uses, like industrial uses and commercial uses get rate, raised at different levels. And then also, there's like, then you also have your assessment values based on the type of use as well, which changes, so it would be assessed differently, which then gives you a different number as well.
Yeah, I figured the assessment.
Yeah.
So I was thinking, the millage rate isn't the same for every piece of property except for, say, a commercial property that isn't homesteaded, obviously, it's getting charged the extra, what? Nine million per school or eighteen, something like that?
Eighteen.
So there's added mills.
Yeah.
But the village mills, per se, are the village mills.
I believe there is like, like, state-level rates too, because you have a, pretty obvious that there's a commercial property or equipment patch or something like that, I figured out through us. There's different, different things that you have to like kind of categorize, and they'll charge you extra taxes for those things too at the state level, based on your facility, your square footage and everything else, so.
And they're taxed on their usage too, not rezoning, correct?
Yeah.
And then if it's...
So if it's a business on a residential piece of property, it's not taxed as a resident, it's taxed as a business owner, or vice versa, whatever, so it's taxed based on the registered...
Because that's what I was looking at, was, you know, the tax column, or the tax part of the GIS, and that's what was throwing me off, was, I would think that's where that would be filled in, in the tax portion, let's say, would it be used as, right?
So sometimes, yeah, so like, sometimes you'll see where it's, it's an all- residential, if it's being used as a commercial site, it'd be classified as a commercial. So you'll see that discrepancy where the zoning map or the existing areas won't look the same in those sort of cases, yeah.
Also, do you guys...
Rob, just out of curiosity, at the last planning meeting, I am pointed out the discrepancies in the zoning map, and it was changed before it was given to council. So it was updated before it was given to council?
Yeah, I noted the ones that you, that you brought up at our meeting.
Yeah.
Is there more besides that?
No, that's what I'm asking you, are there more besides that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. The one outside I was really surprised to find, and you probably know about this, but, the houses on Clark Street that are east of Haven Ridge, there's supposed to be a street back there? And all those lots that are in the front are basically supposed to be duplicated in the back?
Yeah, it's, it's pretty much land out.
Yeah, I was interested to see that there's a street there.
It's called the Orkian, Ork, Orkian. Yeah, there's a street back there, and there's a couple houses on Clark that actually use that street, because a street does exist, probably three hundred feet. They use that street to access their, because they go to the ride and go back. I'm also going to use that street to access their drives.
So that street exits out of the Haven Ridge, or?
No, no, it's just dead end, so those properties are pretty much land out back there, and... There's a house on Haven Ridge, one nearest to the Bridge, right near the Haven Bridge. Because some of those properties, that street was being vacated, and some of those properties came up on a taxor, taxel. He actually purchased two or three lots back there, that, because of where his property ended, they actually abutted his property, so he was able to access them and kind of expand his yard. But as far as building those sites, they were never building those.
But they have addresses.
They do. They have for nine years, fifty, sixty, seventy years.
And I think of, like, how the Cora Parks back end of property ended up in somebody's hands because he just bought up a whole bunch of properties.
Exactly, similar.
And you're buying them off at an address, and you assume that there's an address, there's a street.
Something layers to where it goes.
And it's something there, right? But it's nothing, I thought, I was just really, I was testing, it's still sitting there on the map.
Okay, anybody else on master plan? I'll send out an email to one of our, or let you guys know what's on the distribution issue. Confirm it, and that. Update on rezoning, last month, we went to council and presented the properties, the final three properties on Victoria, and they were unanimously turned down from council. So I was told that that's, we're just moving on from that. Anybody have questions on that?
Well, it wasn't turned down. Nobody made a motion.
Nobody made a motion?
Moved down.
Yeah, so technically, it's still there. I, I'm told there's no, I don't know if we decided to move on, no. So, but that's not up to us.
You, you do have the opportunity that you could re-present.
Yeah, we could. It's still open. They didn't vote, so, that's, you know, so. Anybody else have any questions on that? Okay, new business, and I'll leave this one to Rob, Capital Improvement Plan.
Okay, starting on the plan they gave you, I'll just kind of slide through the highlighted parts of it.
Does anybody else need one? Let's hand it to you.
You're good.
So the first line is basically, it, this is a tool to identify needs for financing the sources of public infrastructure and improvements. The point of the plan, or the reason for the plan, and the reason it's, it's being issued, is part of basically a checklist on going for grants. Master plan, rec plan, everything is checked off in the boxes. So when it gets to the state, the state goes, "Oh, they checked all their boxes, they can move on." "Ooh, these guys didn't check all the boxes. We can be done with those and move on." So it's big, it's put, so it can be put together as a full plan. Look at that. And the, the last full paragraph there says, "Projects are guided by various development plans and policies established by the Planning Commission, government, government body, and the administration." So throughout the document, you're going to find, or I'm sure you found, a lot of references to plan. And because when this came up, you know, I guess it was February, the thought of it being put together by planning was kind of, really? We don't know anything about it. So, and then at the top of the page two, it also references where the name began.
Hmm? What page are you reading from?
Page two, top. It states, "In the Michigan Planning Enabling Act, PA 33 of 2008," is how that, this has come about and ended up on our list. So this is where I'm talking about it's going to come back. Each year, all projects included within the CIP, and this is the second paragraph, "Are reviewed, a call for new projects is made, and adjustments are made to existing projects arising from changes in the amount of funding required, conditions, timeline, and a new year of programming is also added each year to replace years that have already been funded." And they could have been funded through grants, it could have been funded through the budget.
Do you want a copy, Joe, just to go along, or?
So this is coming back to us, so that's, that's what I'm trying to let you know. This document does not address all capital expenditures of the village. Basically, there are large-scale improvements, projects over twenty-five grand, that are going to make, make it for review on the list. Page three, chapter three. "The CIP plays a significant role in the implementation of the master plan by providing the link between planning and budgeting for capital projects." And that probably isn't something that we've actually gone through in links, where in our master plan, it also would be cap items. But again, it's ongoing, so it's still a comparison that we can work on. Going on to page four, and it talks again about the planning commission. Works with the CIP committee. The committee was made up of Mark from Parks and Rec, Dan from the fire department, Brian from council, and Ann, and myself. I know that they did send out something, I believe, on maybe Facebook or something, trying to get some public input, and I don't know what the results, if there were any results from that. Did you know, Jen?
I never received that.
Okay. I guess there was something put out there in public in one of the notes I got here. But that's also something that can get more intense. So going to page eleven, is the Parks and Recreation, recommendations from Parks and Rec. And there's nine items there that they would like to do in their project. But I guess there is a DNR grant that they're looking to propose that may cover many of those things this fall that they're submitting. Chapter eleven talks of the Parks and Rec's wish list, and you have the fire department wish list. And then the final page that was going to cover was page thirteen, and it's basically sketching out the money per year that's going to be set aside for capital improvements, and where they're looking to put the funds in the fire department. Any questions? The wishes are from President Pride, she's going to confirm approval tonight so she can move this on to council on Tuesday to meet the deadlines that they're trying to make to be able to apply for these fall grants. And by the time that, you know, it's going to that point, it's going to come back around for review. Oh, and there was also a section in there about, about the roads and their condition of the Pfizer map. I know we've seen this map in the past.
Paser.
I think you know a couple.
Paser.
Is that how it's pronounced?
Paser.
Paser. But it's been a few years since, well, Chris brought it to us when he was president. So this is an updated version of that. And I still don't really understand how Ambeth's isn't the worst street in the community, but, since it's not a street.
So this is just basically, like you said, is a wish list and just kind of a tool to try to get, and it's a fluid document, correct? So it's, it'll be ever-changing, okay.
Regardless, it's actually taking money and putting it somewhere that isn't to be spent, that its expenses to be saved, which is a wonderful thing too. I just don't know how that list will change over time.
Okay, anybody questions for Rob's? Start with Rachel.
I mean, you said Ambeth's, but it's not even on the list.
Yeah, there's a lot of streets out that aren't on this list that should be.
Yeah, and that's something we should, we should probably have some input in from planning. That's just the one that always blows, I always look for that one, because it's not the best. The only street I know that's actually, you know, besides the south.
Well, I mean, it looks like he's got the Paser rating at a five, and these are fours on the bow, so, I mean, I guess that would be why, but I don't know how.
Well, that's a...
It's a five.
Every street in the village, every street, every sidewalk in the village is rated, anyway. And the whole intent of Paser is to rate the streets and to always do the worst first.
Who rates them?
The Indian inn firm.
Oh, they go street by street, sidewalk by step?
Sidewalk by sidewalk.
Yeah.
And...
Yeah, I'm just surprised to see that Ambeth's is a five.
Who is?
Ambeth's. Ambeth's. It's yellow, it's fair plus, Paser five.
But, and, the other thing that comes into play is to, well, in the past, you see, in the past, is, while a street may be rated low, who does it service? And sometimes you have to balance, because a bad street services one house, and a street that may not be as bad, but's in, you know, a condition that needs to be repaired, services twenty houses. So you have to kind of, but take the politics out of it, you know, I mean, if you do Ambeth's drive, it only services two houses and Ambeth's. Or do you put that money on a street that services twenty?
More residents.
Yeah.
I can tell you the one bad thing about, the thing is that Ambeth's hosts so many events and brings so many people into the community, because that's kind of our place to do things in this community is... Whenever I tell my sister that Ambeth, she tells me, "My car's twenty-three years old. I'm not going on Ambeth's."
It'd be a lot of stuff on horses, too.
Yeah.
That wouldn't really tell.
It's a lot of guest traffic.
When a village maintains the... When the village maintained the wastewater treatment plant over there, the, the street was, was better taken care of, because we had to access the plant. You know, there's been multiple discussions over the years about demolishing that plant and giving the property, or some of the property to Amets. And improving that street has been part of that discussion. It just never, you know, they, they changed commanders and, you know, you go from a guy that's willing to talk to a guy that, that starts making demands, well, when he started making demands, you know, they follow him down there.
Dan did bring that up at the committee meeting, the condition of it. I guess he went back there and looked at it. And says he's a little concerned about the amount of cracking, that some of those, what do you call them, Chris, the? Tons?
Oh, yeah, the.
Blooms?
Yeah.
Yeah. That, the shape of some of them is, I'm wondering how bad they really are.
I mean, it should be the moment, we had a grant in place at one point to over pursue a grant that would pay for a large portion of the demolition. But you know, when you get the state involved, when you get Eagle involved, you know, the cost quadruples, you know, and we thought that we could go in there with, you know, the proper equipment, you know, and demolish all the concrete walls and, you know, the mechanicals out there and just kind of fill it in. Well, yeah, that's what you should be able to do. But because you got your old sledge, the sledge drying this, you know, they probably want you to remove them and take them to a, you know, proper landfill. Look, they've been sitting there for 15, 20 years, drying out all the crap and dry.
Yeah, I would think so.
You are correct.
Except on a rainy day.
Yeah, yeah, there is a big process that you have to follow to eliminate the balloon, and it's very expensive.
Eagle just makes it more complicated than what it should be.
All right, Rachel, anything else? Gracie?
Nope.
So I guess I would, you know, the one thing that I'd like to see in here that's not in here is a building. You know, no matter what, this lease has come and due, and everybody knows it, we've known it for years, we've been fighting it, we've been fighting it for years. So, you know, if we don't start saving today, you know, there's always, you know, another reason to not start saving. And I just think pushing it down the road, it just means more. Eventually, it'll fall on the residents. And, you know, we, we need to have a plan, a, a Plan B if things continue to fall through. That's it for me.
I would have liked to see more time given to this. I mean, some really, you know, public hearings and town halls or something, because this seems to be, you know, there was one committee meeting, and now we're asked to adopt. And I'm not sure that the, you know, some of the items that are in this plan, while they don't necessarily follow planning's lap, but as a resident, they, they could follow our lap as residents. And I see items in here that, while they may be, you know, or someone's wish list are really practical. And, you know, so I'm, I'm thinking that, you know, some of these things are, you know, should be eliminated. And let's just test items that are really attainable.
Well, I would say that would be, planning's purview is to, if there, if any changes that you would like to see or make to this current plan, to go to council would be your purview to alter. The only thing I think that probably they would have to do, like you're saying, because they, they budgeted 1,094, 84, 54, 84, 84 million, that's what they've kind of set that they feel they can put aside. So it would have to fall, something have to be scratched in order to change up and put something else in its place.
And where's this funding coming from?
It is in the document.
There's a general fund money?
No, it's Act 51 money, it's street funds, it's all the various departments that it can be pulled from.
But some general fund.
The fire bill, some general.
It's gonna have to be some general fund.
So it's pulling from each of the accounts and some, they didn't give percentages or matters of which, how much is coming from each, but just that it's being funded from all the areas of the village to save.
But at the same time, again, it's a fluid document, so it's, like you touched on earlier, if, for example, they're applying for a grant for a pavilion.
Yeah.
Right? We have this piece for the paperwork. What, what do you want to, I mean, if you want to make changes, we can, Chris, what do you want to remove?
No, I just, I, I see a lot of stuff in here that I just don't think is necessary and it shouldn't be a high priority, but that's just my opinion. And, you know, my opinion so far has gotten me in trouble, so.
Well.
I mean, I looked at sidewalks, and I go, well, we put, there's a sidewalk ordinance now. Why are we paying for sidewalks when the sidewalk ordinance delegates it to?
People. Good point. Sidewalks, the percentage of sidewalks, I mean, the village is pretty much, with the exception of there are certain streets that, you know, that may not have a short sidewalk or sidewalk on both sides of the street, but the sidewalk of the village in the last three years, only 50% of the sidewalks have been replaced. So why are we designating hundreds of thousands of dollars of sidewalks?
But that's only in a certain sector of the village.
Well, the whole village.
So I, you can walk, we can walk the subdivisions, and there's a lot of sidewalks that needs to be replaced.
That's the homeowner's responsibility now.
I understand what you're saying, but if there was a grant available to fix that, why would we not apply and try to get the funds?
Because you're talking about grants, this is talking about, you set aside $25,000 a year for sidewalk replacing.
Hundred and ten.
Or 110, whatever the number is. And I, that's my point. We're, we're kind of like misdirecting, you know, the funding. I mean, you know, we, the sidewalks west of the tracks have been, pretty much are replaced in the last three or four years. And where there were no sidewalks, sidewalks have been put in. And then when you cross the tracks, there are sidewalks down Park Street. Yes, there's not sidewalks on both sides of Park Street for the, you know, out to Grasshopper, but there's, there are sidewalks on Park Street. I mean, there's sidewalks on one side of Grasshopper. I mean, there are sidewalks that are relatively new. And, and so, why don't we redirect some of that funding so they set aside for a future home?
A future home?
Future home.
Oh, here, I'm like. Can we go back to the sidewalks for a second, though? So, a couple of years ago, we went around and we marked all the sidewalks in the community, and we said everybody had to replace them. And we, in fact, had a couple of people in town replace their sidewalks. And then we went through and we got grants to pay for them, and we actually refunded some monies.
We did.
But now you feel that in a subdivision, that sidewalk is viewed as a different life?
Well, we could be in, we could be in sidewalk hell forever.
So why is it that your community, and I'm just gonna say, you, just because you.
No, you said it.
I, but I'm gonna say that, and all I'm gonna say that is because the grant only allowed usage on the west side, correct? So I live on the west side, I don't know who else does here.
No, you live on the west side.
I don't know where, Craig, you, oh, no, you don't, you live on the arse. So, why would we not want to have a sidewalk availability for people on the east side?
If we can pursue grants and, and, and get grants, that's fine.
Right. So again, let's go backwards, that's why that's, this is on the list. Again, this is a fluid document, so I can apply for a sidewalk grant, and I have my capital improvement plan in place that includes sidewalks.
Let me just.
I just want to take it too literally, that's all.
Wouldn't it have to come back, I mean, if, if this money is set aside for sidewalks, and if we get a grant for sidewalks, you have to come back to, you have to change this, come back to planning and approve again to have that money changed, or you can't use that money for anything else, right?
Can you back me up, Craig? Is every, I'm sorry, that stains you what you're saying. Does this document come back to planning or not as a change?
The way I read it is we own this document.
So any change in that comes to us first?
Yeah.
So if, if there's, so this fluid document, every time it's modified, comes here for modification and then goes to council?
Yeah, it has to come originally through planning and then, then they, they.
That's not a very fluid document if they're not meeting again top token.
Well, that, that doesn't have, have to happen either. This could happen, we could meet again next month on this. But it has to come up by September, next of this year, again, to, to start planning it. You can't wait till, until, you know, obviously, May is a bad idea, right? So it has to come, you know, we can, you can start delving into this much deeper right after this meeting for next year's plan.
That's a good idea.
We don't have to wait, we can.
But they need something, what, by the end of May, to show the state, is that what?
It sounds even, it, it.
I don't know if it's necessarily to show the state, but to have a place to, to start applying for grants.
DNR grants specifically, I guess, there's deadlines to meet, to put everything in place to apply for those type of grants. But I guess it could be, you know, other private grants or other places that, that comes up as a line item that you need to have as part of your application.
Just to say that is my view.
And then others sure don't.
I don't mean to be the download list, but the, most of the state grants, DNR particular deadlines have passed. Which is fine, because we could put ourselves in line for next year. In this document, there's been a lot of talk that it's unnecessary. We received close to 20,000 grants in this document, never replaced. Okay? In my opinion, and it's just my, my reading through it, is it suggested?
Yeah, it's, the way it was explained to me is it's, some things, some people aren't gonna require, couldn't care less about it. Others are using it as a benchmark to say, oh, look, and they got all this stuff, move them and dump these just because you got 10,000 grants to, to, to sort through, and it's a way to eliminate the herd down to a more manageable number by using things like that that not everybody does, and so you can eliminate them, and you have a reason for them.
Most grant writing, most grant writing applications, you know, are stored. And yes, you know, this may cost, if that happens in place, it may cost us five months. But it doesn't necessarily eliminate, eliminate us from applying.
Okay, Craig, I feel like we kind of skipped over you.
I mean, I don't want to pick on sidewalks, because I love sidewalks, but, my, my point was is we can't just say, hey, we, we got a grant for 500,000 for sidewalks, so let's just spend this money for, I don't know, the Fire Department instead, without coming back to the commission and re-appropriating those funds, you just can't.
You wouldn't be able to do that anyway, if you got, if you got a grant for sidewalks.
No, I mean, that 110,000 that they budget in the year mark for the sidewalks, you can't just write checks for the Fire Department to buy stuff. You would have, we would have to come back to planning, approve it, send it to council, and have it approved again there, before anything.
Yeah, you can't make up stuff between now, this is a, you know, closed plan, I guess you'd call it, if we approved it, it'd have to be reopened to alter whatever it's doing here.
But at the same time, I don't think, it, it doesn't have to be followed, I hate to say it so bluntly.
Oh, the plan?
Wait, is this what?
Yeah, I mean, it's not, you just couldn't say, oh, what you're saying is take, oh, well, they, we didn't spend that 110 on sidewalks, we're gonna buy, you know, a new whatever, because it's not allocated to that.
Right, that's, that was my, my question.
But you don't have to per se spend the money on the sidewalks if you didn't need to either. So, in the, if you did get a grant for 50 grand in the, in 2023, you would obviously alter that number. And you can allocate it towards other departments or other new projects.
One thing I do know about how dear to your budgeting goes, if you don't use your entire allotment, you don't get that much the next year again. If you get a hundred, if they give you 100,000, and you spend 80, you're only getting 80 next year. So they're, they're gonna spend it if, if it's there and available.
But thi- this isn't money to spend, this is money to save. So it's going in the savings. It's not going into an expense, this is, it's not, you're exactly right. But this isn't what this is, this is setting money aside.
And the way grants are dealt up, they're gonna give you, the, the funding that you receive for a particular item, it all has to be spent on that particular item.
Yeah.
You know, it may be a 50/50 matching, or maybe a 85/15, whatever it may be. I mean, so you're gonna submit a, a cost for that particular item, and then they're gonna fund whatever the sentence they are gonna fund, but it all has to be spent on that.
This is more of a savings account than it is a.
It, it's really more of a guide for the budgeting process.
And it's not really that we're saying we're gonna spend 100,000, 110,000 on sidewalks, it's the potential to spend that.
I agree with that.
I have to say, I think too, we're at a bit of a disadvantage here, looking at this. Because my personal opinion is back to what I said, it's the building. You know, I'm not familiar with the budget, we don't deal with the budget here. How can I look at this document and say, well, let's put aside 500,000 a year annually for the building so that, and how do I decide, sitting here, not budget in form, that, you know, this would be the right amount for this or that?
And I will agree with you. But it's coming through the Planning Commission because of that planning act. But you are correct, we don't work with the budget, so we don't know. Now, the Planning Commission doesn't have to make this, which they didn't.
Right.
Right, the committee made it, which is very, very common.
Right.
So we're just.
See, I guess for my.
They're blessed, they're asking us to bless it.
Yes, I get that, but, you know, for me, you know, my blessing personally, sitting here, is why aren't we looking at the building? And, and so this makes me, but then I'm also uneducated as to say, okay, well, here's this page 13, we need to look at the building, and I would like to recommend that we put in X dollars per year, and, oh, by the way, where are you gonna get that from? Nowhere, 'cause I have no idea. Like, that's basically shoving a problem. But I feel like the absence of the building, no matter where we are with those circumstances.
But these are expenses for a year, it's not like we're putting money away toward sidewalks. So to say we need to put the building in here to put money away towards it.
I guess when do we, when do we start, and I mean, this is maybe a bigger question than this committee, committee air commission, is when do we start putting away money for the building? I mean, how many more times do we have to kick it down the curve? Like, eventually, there's gonna, it's gonna require bond, and these people in this community are gonna want it. Because they don't want any more taxes than what they already have, they're already taxed too much.
And water debt.
And, and water, a bond debt and a court debt, sorry, not taxation, but a bond debt, and, you know, so, I mean, we've played out, but the fact that we're just not looking forward at that, we're looking at a capital improvement plan, and the biggest thing that we need, we know, is in the future. And nowhere in it have we addressed it.
And there isn't any building big enough currently? There's not any land big enough anymore now that, that 47 acres is being sold to build a new one?
No, I'm just, I don't see where the building would fit, I don't disagree with your statement, I just don't see where it would fit either.
Because th- these dollar amounts are a dollar amounts that are regularly spent.
Yeah, it's a yearly event.
But we're not saving it. I don't like. What's the difference, I think, that we're, every month, we're taking mon- at the end of the year?
But what's the difference, okay, we called this a five-year plan, if we had called this a 15-year plan, would the building be in it? When does the building earn a place?
Well, the building could be in it, and we would have to create a savings account for the building money. These aren't really savings accounts. We're just saying, in 2022, we're gonna spend.
I get it.
25,000 dollars out of our. 25,000 dollars out of our parks, we're already doing that.
Right, I get it, it's money that we're already spending, yeah, I get it, but what you're asking for.
You're not spending it, I don't know, project, you're taking that money and putting it aside to spend in the future.
No.
You're pulling it off the budget, aren't you?
No, this is spent, this is, we're going to, we're going to apply for grants, and these projected costs to the village each year are net of those grants. So if we get a grant for sidewalks, for however, if we get a 50/50 grant for sidewalks, so we're going to get 110,000 dollar grant and we're going to spend 110,000 dollars in 2022, that's what this document is saying. It's not putting money aside, it's spending.
It's allocating it, period.
But not saving.
Not saving, then.
Uh-uh. It's not, it's not saving.
That's not the way it was explained to me at all.
That's, that's not a capital improvement.
You guys, but this is a budget, this isn't a.
The way we, the way to me, just one million dollars. The one million dollars is coming out of the budget departments everywhere across the board and not being spent that day or this year, they're being put aside to build, to, well, the fire department wants an engine and they want.
Well, they're only going to have 270,000 dollars in five years, so they're going to be able to buy.
Over five years.
Over five years.
Okay, and that's a perfect example, let's look at the fire engine pumper, at six, just as an example.
They can't buy it for 270.
Exactly, so what are they doing, are they saving?
Yeah, that's what, the way I understood it, they're using that money to save towards the purchase of.
Right.
That's what I thought it was.
And so if they're, so if you have a 650,000 dollar ticket item here, why is it here if we're, why are we recognizing it if we're not going to purchase it in the next five years? Like, this is our 2022 to 2026 project synopsis on page 12. 650,000 dollars of a fire engine pumper is their list with a budget or an allocation, whatever you want to call it, or whatever the fire department has in mind, I can't remember, she wrote it on. Oh, of fire.
270.
Right, yeah, so they have a total of 270. So, it's uncrucial if that's the way this is truly working, and maybe it's just an error. You know, that they shouldn't have had this in here, but they can't, this is what's here and.
Okay, let's look at Parks and Rec, 110,000 dollars is not going to upgrade restrooms, new plays games, swing set, track extension, multi-use pavilion, lighting, it is not going to buy all those items.
No, you might, I mean, you probably get two.
And it's same with, same with the DPW for that matter, the items I said we replied.
It's a fluid document, it's not a savings account.
I understand.
And the, the building, I like what Rob said about, once, once we figure this all out, we'll then start next month talking about what the next one is going to look like, and add a building or what have you. Or we can add the building now.
I'd like to see the building added now, personally, I just think we've been kicking it.
Well, first, should we have to buy some property?
I just. I just say, but we could stay at property.
Break the middle of the building.
I, I, I get what you're, I understand what you're saying, but I don't know if the building, a building we could put on there.
No, it, it doesn't exist.
So, that's, that's my, if I'm, you.
But you could retrofit the, the old community center, which was the town hall, and go back to have a meeting with the high school or the administration building for that matter.
You're renovating or building new.
Does anybody have that document with them that we were given a couple of months ago?
This one? The, the capital improvement one?
Yeah, yeah, I see that right quick. Let's take it, I'm just going to cruise this a minute and see what their, what their definition is.
I mean, there's like a curious.
It's a community planning and fiscal management tool.
Carol, look up a language that, that guaranteed that, that any changes to this plan came before, came to council, came to paying first.
It, it does say that in there.
I guess I'm, I'm.
Yeah, I feel like.
I guess I'm going to read my lines. Subsequent CIP documents are reviewed by planning prior to the village's yearly budget review with the goal that the CIP will help implement village's master plan.
Which page did I read for Rob?
Page two, the bottom line.
Expenses? Expan- are considered operational and should appear in the annual, annual budget. Working document, updated annually.
Where did this document come from? Who prepared?
It's boilerplate.
Yeah.
So, you know.
And they just tacked on our last line.
Yeah, she started really, she prepared it.
Your information, you just fill in the blanks.
And, I don't know, is this the way it still occurs, I mean, this is the way it occurred when I was a counselor. Like, and I'm going to say the fire department, because the fire department got three mills every year. Whether they spent that money or didn't spend that money, contrary to like the way you're saying, the budget never changed. They got three mills that went in, they didn't spend it, they saved it for other things in the future to buy bigger particular items. I don't, does it still work that way?
It still works that way, yes.
So, they could be getting money from various sources here in this project and saving the 270, but yet still within their three mills, saving another 300,000 dollars, right?
Correct. Because that would be half of, almost, just right about half. And Craig is right too, because I remember years ago, Chris, the, with the Parks and Rec, you said, you guys got to spend this money, it's allocated to you guys, or we're going to take it out of your budget line, so you are correct.
Well, I mean, that comes from the general fund, I'm not talking about mills or some grants or anything, the stuff that comes from the general budget that's earmarked for, for fire, you don't usually, you basically lose it, so.
Well, you don't, yeah, you lose, you use it that year, but you don't lose it the next year, you just didn't use what you had as maximum potential, yeah.
No, that isn't the way we ran it though, they kept that money like.
The Parks and Rec?
No, I'm saying for fire.
You can't touch the fire department.
Fire is their.
And that's why I'm making that example, is fire, everything else is very, we can move it all around wherever we want, following year.
No, no, there's, there's some restrictions.
Yeah, but I mean, it's not.
Water, sewer money only be used for.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Act 51 only be used for, you know, major local streets and what's up under those major local streets.
I guess my head goes to what the mills are, the mills is the village's play money, that isn't, that they collect and they allocate.
I mean, only the general mills, the highway, cemetery and that kind of stuff, you can't touch those.
Well, yeah, but I'm saying, the, the, we don't have, we don't have a dedicated cemetery mill, do we?
Sure we do.
Do we?
Always have.
Yeah.
That's another place we never spent 10 cents on, except to cut the grass.
Class.
I don't know, I paid for them for three years.
They spent some money there the last few years, just putting in benches.
And stuff.
Yeah. Yeah, it did look, I mean, I'm not saying it didn't look plain, but like the.
I mean, there's some trees that.
Yeah, those are private.
Are they?
Those are private.
And they're, so they're, that were going to get fixed because those people are lonesome, dead.
There's, there's one family out of Ohio that does come up annually to tend to their loved one.
Really?
But those are private property.
The rest of them are, I mean, is there actually an owner to, you know?
Some are.
I mean, they've got to be dead, right? They're kids, 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 got.
It could be their kids, 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 kids.
Kids. And they're awful.
You could be a distant relative and not know it.
Hey, I check my ancestry once a week to see if I got any cousins or relatives and, you know, that's a lot of that.
Cemetery is .41250 mills.
4.215.
Point four one two five zero. Highways 1.85 and general operating is 9.48750.
And the village, or the fire department still street?
Yes.
So you find, you.
I, this is, I mean, if we did all of these steps, it'd take us two years to do this.
Which is why it's kind of weird that it was done in one meeting.
Weather plate.
Yeah, it wasn't, we, we didn't use development guidance and started from scratch, it's.
Well, firstly, I would like, I would like to see the building added, does anybody else want to see the building added?
Yeah.
I don't have any objection, we just have to change the budget, I think it still has to stay within the million dollars that we submit, right? So you got to ask it from somebody else if you can't increase what they're going to.
I don't know, if you ask someone, that's what I mean, like, I.
Well, we would have to create something in our budget though.
Right.
So they've put aside a million dollars a year.
No, I, I, then the village would have to create a bu- a line item in the budget, saving money towards that.
So we're not putting, okay, I, I think I'm clear on this. So we're not putting a line item in the budget to save for these six items that are already this.
They're already in the budget.
Okay.
Correct.
So it's just.
It doesn't say where it's coming from, it says as projects are completed, funding from other sources is received.
Because administrative parks, DPW, fire, streets and sidewalks, all those categories are already budget lands.
Yeah, it seems like for this year, because it'll be reviewed again in a couple of months, they probably just put something there. But I don't know where these numbers are coming from in the budget.
I'll just say this.
And it was mentioned, like Chris mentioned about matching funds, that if a grant did come up and then the, the capital improvement prop, uh, budget has an item that's going to match the funds that they have and then they, their strength in saying, oh, they've, they've budgeted for that, they're saving for that, we can give them a matching grant, 50/50, whatever the split is, but there's money within that.
But playing devil's advocate on that, if we go for a grant that's not in here, are they going to say, well, they did the budget for it, so they're at the bottom of this now.
And it, it sounds like this is where the, the categories were that they chose, so I mean, I don't know if there's grants for buildings, but.
It's not.
Probably for purchasing property, though, there's, there's, there's grants out there. So if you put building slash property, but I think you got to steal the money from some of these other items.
Property people.
Yeah.
Well, my recommendation would just be to add it, um, obviously, I'm not going to sit here and pretend to know what I can steal from and what I can't.
Yeah, I mean, we don't know where this, where this came from again.
I'm just going to say, like, I'm, I'll support the document as long as it's faithfully added to it and it can be looked at and determined by next week.
Could that be covered under a DDA? Or what was the other one now? The other one was in the DDA, the.
Corral improvement authority?
Yeah.
The corridor improvement authority is actually in here, which I'd like to kind of work on eventually here, but.
Yeah, but the DDA, would that be able to cover?
The DDA in the village, you know, when you typically talk about DDA in the downtown area, there's not enough tax base in the downtown area to.
We have one business to capture, that's the new one, so that's all we're going to, I mean, if we were to.
We have to do something else besides a DDA.
If we were to consider municipal property, um, crash it, we could put that into the corridor, right? How would that work?
And nobody wants to know the taxable value of that building.
So, in a corridor improvement authority, it just has to be traditionally commercial stretch of a major corridor, a crash, and say, um, you can capture a number of properties from that, you just set baseline, you capture everything above that.
Could we use that, those funds to acquire property and municipal, like?
You know, I don't think there's interest for that, acquisition, you use for acquisition, you use for maintenance, you can use for development, um, whatever you need to use it for branding, marketing, whatever it is, uh, it's pretty convenient at that front. Yeah, so, wait, now, Mark's kind of high way?
Yeah, no.
So, if you start it now, it'd be kind of hard, it'd be a bad baseline to set up, but um, there's also a way to kind of reset the baseline too, if there was a crash or something, so. Wait for all the foreclosures three years from now.
So, okay, that's, that's where I'm at, like, I don't know if anybody else can bring up that or.
And what do we set for a number for that? And I was just playing with the fact that this place is 16,5 a month, that's 200 grand a year. We've dumped 2.7 million into something we have no owning, plus how many repairs and probably, it's got to be well over 3 million dollars.
We're all legal fees on top of that.
Oh, yeah, legal fees, so, after 16 years and 3 million dollars, we have nothing.
How many years are left on this, Rachel?
This table was included as a purchase of the building, I don't think you could walk out.
I don't even know.
Is it, do you know how many years are left on this?
It's a total of 25.
Do you know what's left though? So we've been here 15, so we have 10 years left.
It's 25 years.
So, if we, even if we put away 250,000 dollars a year, it's only giving us that 2.5. No, which isn't much.
2.1.
2.5. It'll be worth a whole lot more.
No, because property costs look.
Aren't Chris and I too rich?
Well, I mean, I would say they're only 250,000, because frankly, I think that's kind of low.
Per year.
Yeah.
But that's the other, the other thing to look at, is if, for, the day we're not here, we have 16,500 extra months in the, in the coffers.
Plus taxes, plus insurance.
Yeah, I love taxes.
But we pay our food.
Yeah.
But yeah, I would say 250,000 minimum a year, and, I, I mean, something's better than nothing, so far we say that, so.
Because when John said, you know, it's taxed based on what the, the use of it is, well, this is used as a government building, but yet we're paying commercial taxes on that thing, I'll see how that. I mean, that's what the judge's decision was, and that's E, but it's still correct. So you want to bank this budget higher than 1 million, you want to make it 1.2?
But, I mean, that's going to be up to, I mean, listen, I'm just sitting here, and obviously, Sandy is going to have to look at this and say, is this a practice, and I don't, I don't have the answer, so, but I do think we should be saying this often.
Well, what if, to make the point, we do 20,000 dollars, take it from sidewalks, and at least it's on this line item going forward next in 2023, really work on the numbers, but at least it's on the, on the plan, from the, from the get-go. Well, I'm not saying I disagree, I'm saying 2023 would need to change.
I just, like, it just never gets done, it's just one of those things that never gets done, so.
So we just have to come up with a budget item that it would, uh, apply to. Or.
Or create a line.
No, yes, but the village, or has to come up with a, an, a line item.
Yeah, it would be, it would have, I would just say, call it its own line, I mean.
But in order to fill these boxes, they have to pull money out of, out of places to fill these. Right? So, so much is coming from Act 51 to help with the street, so much is coming from here, so much is the general. If there's some number that they're pushing into these boxes, right?
I would assume, I guess that's, that was my assumption, but that's not what I'm hearing.
And like, nowhere in, I've skimmed this document and tried to find the finance pieces of it, and it keeps just telling me it's a tool for when the village sets its budget.
Because the vill- village needs to decide that it's not going to spend that money, it's going to put it over here.
Sure.
It wants to spend it on those items, but it's not going out as a, to refer back to Craig, oh, 20% of your budget is gone because you didn't spend it, well, that's because 20% of it is going somewhere to save it.
I don't necessarily think they're going to be saving that money though.
That's, that's the way she explained it though.
That's not the line.
That's not, there's, it doesn't say anything in here about saving money or.
I thought the whole purpose of this was to set it aside.
That's what I thought too, but.
I mean, I thought these were expensive, I thought this was like an expense plan.
I think it's what you're hoping to spend, I mean, you're not, I'm not authorizing to buy a, a grass cutter, uh, hose or whatever thing that, that is, put on grass fires.
Or grass fire tени.
Well, plus, other communities have one, we have agreements with them, so I mean, I, I could throw that there too, I'm, I don't see the use of that item, but.
I mean, part of something I would like to see is probably fall in the DPW, it's like a wheat remediation, a frag mighties remediation.
Yeah.
I mean, there's, you drive down a grassy, and there's six feet high, and it's April, or just beginning of May already. And looks like garbage, and it's collecting garbage. You get rid of all that, you don't have any, any more grass that can catch on fire. It's a need of.
Yeah, I would also do, I'll definitely buy a brush hog, but we always find somebody else, a ton of money.
Yeah, we may go to a contract with, uh, Dray Commission office, but they do have a program for it, that, uh, you may be able to contact the building to, when they address our issues. But it has to be, I, I know there's a, they do it twice a year, do something twice a year, early in the spring and mid-fall, they, that. I walked around one day a few years back and they were spraying some kind of chemical and trying to kill them or whatever.
I remember many years ago, they burned that marsh and the ashes carried all the way over here from Almanac.
Oh, yeah.
True.
Wow, yeah, that was, that's very memorable.
Frag lighties burned.
We were actually there when they were doing it, until we came back to the village, just like it's following us.
It's followed you here.
It's a one-time thing out of the current thing, and I would be, but you're listening.
Right, that's where, anybody else, any, any feedback, anyone? Chris?
I just had a quick question about the multi-use pavilion. Did they say where they wanted to put that? Because they put gazebo, fountain park pavilion at community park, but then they have a multi-use pavilion most of the year.
I think they're like an amphitheater for like music and park kind of stuff.
That would make.
Amphitheater type pavilion.
Okay, that would make more sense, okay.
Was that?
For, for a community park?
Fountain Park, I thought.
No, I thought the gazebo was at Fountain Park. I think the amphitheater type thing was at Community Park. I don't know.
How much room is back there at Community Park? Because there's still a lot, a lot of paper chalk in the back.
No.
No, to put all this stuff in.
That's what we cut off.
Can we tell, won't we, someone?
You know, where all this stuff would be really cool would be put, put. Perfect. Look, look beautiful, too. Put nice green green grass.
And then I'll have to expand the walking path. It is what it is. It's what it's been.
Doesn't that all these things say exactly where they are, like splash pad, community park?
But the, the multi-use pavilion doesn't.
I thought that was Fountain Park.
Splash pad?
No, the multi-use pavilion.
No, I, it's my understanding that's community park.
Well, we've got a pavilion at Community Park and a multi-use pavilion at somewhere else, so there's two listed.
Pavilion, I'm assuming is just a big covered thing with.
Yeah.
A stage is what they have.
With picnic tables for people to have graduation party.
Right, we have two of those at Community Park already.
Is it?
Yeah.
Well, I'm not so concerned about that.
Okay, that's.
I just wanna, like, that's my, that's my want, that.
And we need to get a lot of input as far, from Mark, as far as exactly what the very fine details of those were, but that's kind of what the technique was, is that, was that Fountain Park with a stage, probably those kind of things. Instead of renting, they, they mentioned about the cost of renting the stage.
Cause you had.
The trailer, the trailer, trailer.
Yeah, they're paying for it now.
Yeah, we used to get free. Okay, anybody else? Uh, comments, questions, Rob? Capital improvement plan. Okay, is there a motion?
Well, I'd make a motion to approve it, because I think they need it, and I think we can reopen it next month.
Support.
Rob, will you accept the amendment?
Oh, shit.
On the building, um.
Oh, yes, I, I have no objection to that. Where do we pull the money from?
I, I guess it's gotta just be in.
Well, I also, you have to go back to the committee, you have to have done with it.
Then it's not gonna make it back here until June, won't make it till council till June. I don't know if that screws their deadlines for what they're trying to achieve.
I mean, I don't care if Sandy looks it up in the office or, you know, whatever. I don't know if it's that easy. I have to say, if they had, literally had a two-hour meeting and figured it out, I would assume Sandy probably had a lot to do with the numbers.
So then do you wanna leave it in the motion as if possible?
No.
Well, then that's where I think we got a problem. I think if we leave it to where the number changes, it's gotta come back.
Cause it just won't happen.
Yeah.
Well, it tells you the people that, um, are involved in the planning. Did you read that group of people here? That your city manager.
Municipal clerk, and I was nowhere near that meeting.
Well, I'm just trying to see.
That wasn't you running down the street?
Your level, your level. I was like, I guess I will say minimally two hundred and fifty thousand.
How's that?
Rec director a year?
Yes.
So, and that sounds great. I, I'm not saying I don't support that. So what we're saying is, we're gonna take two hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of our revenue, and we're gonna put it aside and not spend it. So that's gonna, so we're gonna have to reduce two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in expenses.
When are we gonna do it?
I, I understand what you're saying, and I, I'm not saying they disagree with you, but I think.
I don't know where we're gonna get it, because honestly, like I said, I don't have, I'm not that person. And, and, but I think, again, keep pushing it along, eventually, you know, every year we don't do something, is one year we have less to draw from to put in the bank. So I think we need to start drawing now, and I think twenty thousand dollars, with all, no disrespect, I know you were trying to just create a line item, is nothing.
Oh, I thought you said two hundred and fifty, that I did.
No, I said twenty thousand. I was trying to snake twenty grand out of sidewalks, leave the number at one million.
Let's look at the practicality of this, this building as it is. Let's just say hypothetically speak, for the sake of, we have an option to buy it in fifteen years, or ten years.
We can buy it today if we have three point five million.
Exactly. This two hundred and fifty thousand dollars gives us two point five million. We're still shy, one million, for the purchase of this building, if we have the ability to do it. If we started saving two hundred and fifty thousand dollars today, we're still, it's, it's still a low-ball number. But it's one million less than we have to go to the residence floor in, in a bond, where they're, you know, wondering why their water bill is so high still, because they've paid off everything else, and we're just gonna add more to it. Where do, I guess my question is this, then, if we don't start doing it now, how do we live?
I understand that, and there's a lot of answers, but I think then we need to make a hard decision as a group, that we want to have a finance person here, or who's the, who wants to have this discussion about a meeting and bring them in here, and that's a whole separate meeting. Because my fear is, I feel like you guys are gonna literally look for them to be doing this, and I don't have faith that that's going to happen. I believe that this, as I'm reading this, this is just a document, a tool to use to set the budget. And so at the end of the year, if you went in and said, okay, show me where you saved that money, it's not going to be there.
Well, I try.
I, I, and I'm not saying that, I mean. I just, I don't think that this is the route to do it, but I'm game to have them all come in.
What is the route?
What I said, you let the village president know that the planning commission wants to have a serious discussion about where they're gonna live. What is the plan? And you don't have a plan? Fine, we'll help you make a plan. But is everybody up for that?
With the, with the creation of this, it is done and created. It's created. Once it's created, planning has the ability to then manage it. So as long as it's created tonight.
That's how this sounds.
We have the ability to work on the next year's plan.
Yes, yes.
We can't change this year's plan.
Correct.
But we have the ability to, and, and in all reality, this, this funding has to, that, because we're always, the, the twenty twenty-two budget is already set.
That's what we're.
Starts in July.
Yeah.
So.
No, I'm just talking about April.
Oh, April? So it's already.
Let's move to year.
It's already in motion.
But, Rob, I, we, that's what we spend anyway. That's already in our line items on the budget.
Can I ask what you guys feel about the two hundred and fifty? As a number?
I'm gonna go with it.
Rachel, I don't think it's a hard ask.
Two hundred and fifty thousand a year?
It's a need, and it's gonna be.
It's a need. I understand.
It's gonna be here a lot quicker than we all think it's gonna be.
Yeah, like.
If nothing else, by adding that item, that one item, is gonna get council attention.
Yeah, and it's also gonna get someone else's attention.
That we're gonna be active in this process and not just.
Who else's such besides council?
Maybe the person who owns this building.
Oh, well, that, that's, they don't care about that. I mean.
They may, they may not, but, you know, it, it, it needs to be addressed. It can't, it just can't be, I'm, I'm, this is an opportunity to put it there, this is an opportunity to put it out there. I, I feel it needs to be.
And this is the one item, that's the one item that's actually coming from planning.
Yeah.
We're being asked to manage this.
How do you feel about the number?
No, we're not being asked to manage it. We're asking to approve it. We're being asked to because it's part of the planning act.
Okay, so we're being asked to.
Approve something we disagree with?
Yeah.
I don't disagree with what you're saying, Jen. I disagree.
I'm saying, I'm not saying you do. I'm saying, so the process is for me to approve it, even though I don't agree with it.
Should we have, we may need to meet again this week, if that, if you put this and give it back to.
I don't mind adjourned in the meeting if that's, if you wanna get the answers.
All right, well, you know what, we're gonna stop, and I'm gonna take a minute right now, and I'm gonna call Mrs. Pridemore.
I will say that step six.
And I may ask her how does she want us to handle this, that we wanna change this.
I did ask her to.
Step six of the capital improvement plan guide is planning commission reviews and gives final edits.
I know she'll answer.
Step six of the planning guide is planning commission reviews and gives final edits to CIP development team.
Okay.
There you go. And that answered the question.
Because they can't have this meeting nine days ago, give us this document three days ago, and they expect us to just pass it as is. It's, and then, so they can have it by next day.
And not have any.
That's not, that's not possible. We've been working on a master plan for two years.
For my opinion, it's not necessary.
For half an hour, five minutes, it's not.
This process should have been six months.
So that's, that's where I'm at, and if you, I guess I'll just, so Tracy, you seconded the motion. Um, did anybody else wanna have any more conversation on it?
I will, but I will second to adding building, but not two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. That's.
Okay.
That's putting fiscal, I mean, it's not a, it's not a good fiscal decision right now, without knowing what their budget is, and if they have allowances to put two hundred and fifty thousand dollars away.
Okay, we'll call a motion.
What, what is the motion?
Well, wait a second, but you were calling a ban.
No, no.
You're not.
Well, shh, Mrs. Pride would express that I shouldn't do that.
No, I said it's not necessary. Someone else would like to, too. That's fine. It's just, does any, would any of us like?
If she has the ability to say, I know where we can get two hundred and fifty grand, and yes, go ahead and do it, and then you're done with this, and now I have to look at this again till next month, two months from now.
I don't think it's a problem. That's fine.
All I'm worried about is if, if, if we don't stay within the one million dollar mark, which has already been allocated at this point for this year anyways. I mean, I'm not, I don't see why we shouldn't be able to change that amount in planning for twenty twenty-three, because that's a whole year away.
Or do we just take?
No, no, that's.
I'm sorry, if you would like to call Ann and say there's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
What goes towards admin, admin costs? Is that?
I'm sorry.
Grant, administrative costs. Is that grant writers, is that, what is that?
Probably.
Paper, ink.
Grant writers, probably engineering costs. I don't know what is, I don't know. I don't know where these numbers came from.
Did administration come here? Was there someone there? That's me?
No, but what's her name?
Was Sandy there?
No, but Sandy put together the numbers.
Okay.
But they didn't make her come to the meeting.
Okay. Was, was, um, Somete?
No. No, what, what we have from Somete is that, um, I'm gonna screw it up again.
The pacer agent.
Phaser.
I'm a Star Trek guy. I wanna call a phaser. Sorry. Phazer, phazer, like phazer. Phazer, okay, I'll, I'll try.
Uh, Jen, would you, um, would you agree to do that with a lower number?
Just for twenty twenty-two?
Just for twenty twenty-two.
Oh, we could do that, too. We can add higher numbers for the years to come, and this is through doing a five-year protection.
What were you thinking?
Well, just, good on you. No, at, uh, just, that was what Rob said earlier, twenty. Just a number to, to force the creation of the line item.
I don't think that's a bad idea. That's a good compromise.
I support that. I just feel that two hundred and fifty thousand, but again, without knowing where that's gonna come from, is committing something that's not physically responsible.
But I would also say this, it doesn't guarantee that the administration will fund it at a later date, because they still set the budget. And, and these numbers are just that, just numbers.
That's what I'm saying. They said, they're, they're saying they can set aside a million a year. I think you gotta stay somewhere within that number. Otherwise, it comes back. Well, we had to fire two guys in the DPW, and, well, the fire chief, he's gone.
What am I to say there?
This is on top of the current budget, right?
No, no, this is, this is, this is in the budget.
This is the budget?
This is in their budget.
This is in their budget.
And in my opinion, unless something has drastically changed in the last eighteen months, these numbers are wrong.
I believe the numbers that we presently spend.
Presently spent, but not necessarily available. There should be much more than that available.
Well, I would just add three hundred.
Well, this would, this is just the cost of the village. There's plenty of grants out there available.
I'm not talking about grants, I'm talking about general fund money, money that come through Act Fifty-One, um, you know, our water and sewer department. Just money that come through the village. The numbers, just on streets, we're showing, I know when I, uh, the street funds, local major had close to three billion dollars. Okay? Local major had close to three million dollars.
Not anymore. Local has almost four, and major has nine seventy-six.
Four.
Um, as of March third.
Four million or four hundred thousand?
Four hundred thousand.
Yep.
I'm looking at the.
And major has how much?
Funding, uh, nine hundred and seventy-six.
So we're talking about one point three, one point four?
I would accept escalating. First line item, start at fifty, everyone up fifty. Fifty, one hundred, one hundred fifty, two hundred, two hundred fifty.
Three, four, five, six.
Jen, do you have any input or insight for us on a community or capital improvement plan? Do you have any experience or some good interpretations?
Nice to meet you.
He's a gentleman.
Yeah, honestly, like, that's something that our planning departments have really worked on.
Okay, no, no, I just wanted to, maybe you had some good blame and terms to.
We've hired, um, we've done our own, we've hired plant brand to help us develop ours, um, just because there's a lot of assets and stuff up in the county. Um, and they created a projection list, a bunch of priorities and everything else, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I don't know if we know this number. I'm asking that, can you ask? What's the county budget number? You know? I'm, I'm guessing it's slightly higher than ours?
Yeah, I think, uh, yeah, our planning department has a decent budget, so I know our planning department budget, so.
Probably higher than the village budget.
I'm sure it's.
How much is color?
I mean, if you guys are good with something escalating, I don't know if anybody has started fifty, I mean, it's coming back to us in a year anyways, but I feel like by putting a low-ball number, it's just not really, I want the importance of it to resonate, like. I, I feel like in the end, it does, it can be, like, if we just put twenty there at the saving spot, it's like, oh, we wanna have a conversation. This is our time to push that conversation. You know, I understand, like I said, I sit here and I say, I, I don't know where we can get the money. I'm not familiar with the budget issue or any, you know. But fifty thousand dollars, we say fifty thousand this year, we're gonna see it again next year, you know, recognize that we write in those line items, one hundred thousand the next year, a hundred and fifty the next year, two hundred the next year. Doesn't, I mean, I hate to say it like this, it doesn't mean anything, because we're gonna revisit it again in the fall, so. But recognizing that we wanna, it shows that a much higher number is needed. It's not even that ironic, it is needed. We can.
So if we submitted something within unbalanced, that's what we'd be kind of doing, submitting an unbalanced budget to that for this. I think you should at least submit a balanced budget for twenty twenty-two and go up from there. You can skip from twenty to, you know, a hundred for next year. But I think we should at least try and stay within the number for this year. But I think we should at least try and stay within the number for this year.
I mean, if you want to put ten thousand. We do want to put fifty thousand on twenty twenty-two, there's things that you pull, a little bit you can pull from each one of these that, that adds up to that quite easily.
Then I think we should do that, so we submit to them a balance.
I don't even care, you know, but if you want to put twenty thousand to make a master plan year, or a junior year, I have, but I wanna see, like, so future years escalated so that the, the need for it, so across that line, everything else is with your hand except for this. So twenty for this year, twenty for this year, two fifty, and just put, um.
Rob, this isn't really a balanced budget, this is just a recommended budget.
But I mean, the village is thinking this, of allocating this amount of money, if you spend more than this allocated money.
I don't think it is a long path.
But if we do, does that cause a budget issue where they gotta change in order to come up with it?
Not here.
Where they spend the money.
Not in this plan.
Not on.
No, 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 not in this.
It would be on the actual budget.
Exactly.
I, I just put fifty for this year and then two hundred fifty across the board, if everybody is good with that.
I am not gonna support two hundred fifty thousand.
They don't have to do any.
No, it's not a problem, that's what I'm saying, they can't do any, but this is a problem, if we put an expectation out there that it's not realistic, and then we expect them to act on it, then we're not gonna be happy when they don't act.
Kind of like a sign ordinance?
Well, there you go.
Oh, boy, that's gonna happen. Oh, the glory come off!
Yeah? Jen?
Just saying.
Jen, that is my point.
But I'm still doing it, and that's mine.
But they, but, but I, but I mean, so, I supported it, so.
It, just accept, you can accept it or not, I, I have to.
I, I mean, if somebody else wants to.
Also.
Her.
Okay, what's the motion?
Sure.
It's been like an hour.
Poor Rachel.
Fifty thousand this year and two hundred fifty over here.
How much this year?
Fif.
Are we reducing anything in this current one to stay at the million?
Add it to the line, I think it's probably the best way to, just add it in, so.
Yeah, new balance of.
So it's one million forty-four thousand.
I mean, because council says to put a thing for this to be.
Right, this is just, we're not setting a budget up here, this is just the plan.
So, we're adding this.
Actually, the first year, I added the fifty thousand to the one million ninety-four thousand, so that would be one million one hundred and forty-four thousand.
Second year is one million three hundred and thirty-four thousand.
You guys are getting stuck on numbers here.
Yeah, doesn't really matter, I'm just, I was just making the totals for him, so the bottom, the new total on the thirteen page.
Because that's what we're gonna submit back to the village.
Yeah, do you know, do you see what I'm saying?
I see what you're saying, but you're focusing on where the money's coming from on this budget, and that's not ours.
No, we don't know where it's gonna come from.
Right, so why, I don't know why you're adding.
I've got line, because it says total one thousand ninety-four, if we add fifty to it, I'm not saying where it's coming from, but we still have to add it to the bottom line, right?
No, let's just submit our request.
The fifty?
For the building and the fifty.
Right.
And let them do that.
So I'm looking at this and I see Parks and Rec recommendations, I see what DPW wants, I see what FIRE wants, where's what planning wants?
Well, it, but planning doesn't, if we want a building, that's great, then Rob, whoever that person, Rob represented planning, Rob would go to that meeting, where's this paper? Where's the guidelines, the guidelines tell you what to do, and at that point.
In defense of Rob, Rob was kind of.
I know, hold, hold on, we, we.
But this is happening all too quick.
I understand.
All too quick.
Yeah, I hesitate.
I don't disagree with you, this happened anyway.
I mean, if I had attended, I still would have been prepared because planning hadn't decided on anything yet.
Yeah, really, this was the first time it's come to us.
But you guys, if you read this, the, they go to all the department heads and ask them, what do you want, what do you need? And everybody gave their, this is what I need, I need a stapler, that costs five hundred dollars, I need this or whatever. If we wanted to participate in it, let's say as a side group, we want a building, why aren't you getting a building on your list? That was the time to do it.
But part of the plan was to go to the department heads, which would have been the planning.
No.
Well, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna say this.
I thought this.
And I kind of soared away.
Can I have a rock, a second? Did anybody on this table think that this was going to be a one-meeting process?
No.
Okay.
No.
When you have given some feedback, if you thought that this was going to be a six-month process?
Yeah.
Okay.
I thought the initial meeting was the kickoff meeting.
It's a kickoff meeting.
To, to go through step one, two, and possibly three, not all the way down to seven already.
Right, I, I would have contributed, and I feel like other people sitting here at the table, I wanna speak to them, would have contributed as well.
And we'd have to discuss like we're having tonight, and then at the next meeting, our, our recommendation would be submitted, but there's no next meeting.
So I guess there was a form, and it's in the email that I got on, I don't know if it's in the email, or if it, it wasn't in the email, it was in the papers and the pen. But, you know, it does show the, um, the request line, there's a capital improvement plan, put in your project name, title, uh, prepared by, date proposed. And I guess that's what was sent to pre-equipment, there's another form, I, I'm guessing this is what was sent to each of the, uh, to DPW and to FIRE department. And it just didn't get to us as a planning commission, because in the document, it says that the, the goal of this document is to realize master plan, um, goals. That's what it's for, is to reach the goals of your master plan. So, yeah, it, you know, we just weren't, it's being very rushed, but I understand that point too, I hate to lose money if this can help us for this year, I just think we need to dig into it deep coming after this. I just hate for us to miss any windows that we may have now.
And then council has to adopt it after, so. Included in the group, Jen, to create the planning group, it says, um, planning commission representative two if possible.
I was asked for one.
I'm sorry.
I was asked for one, so.
Right.
Yeah, so the department heads will fill out a project application for each desired capital improvement, did you fill that out?
But we're not a department head, we don't run a.
We got one from Parks and Rec, and Mark's not a department head.
But he's on the Parks and Rec committee, but they, but there's no funds that come here, we don't spend any money.
Well, he doesn't either, he doesn't get the budget, he doesn't, Parks and Rec does.
They have a budget.
But we don't, we don't.
Wow! The community must involve the planning commission and government body, governing body throughout the process.
You're gonna love that when you're stuck into doing that for free.
Sure.
Well, he doesn't get the money, when we were at.
Well, no, I mean, but she had to scramble it from people in the community.
No, actually, I, he's my guy, so. But anyways, moving on, where are we at here, we have a motion on this table?
It's so five hundred for the first year and.
Um, no, I, I know, fifty for the first year. Next year, two hundred fifty after, for two thousand, so fifty for twenty twenty-two, two fifty for twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven. And.
And I seconded.
Um, who made the motion, Chris?
You did.
Oh, I did?
Rob.
No, I, oh, round it, I'm sorry.
So Rob made the motion.
I seconded it, yeah.
Um, Craig made the second, and we'll do a roll call.
Wait, questions or comments first?
Oh, questions or comments?
So, my only comment I have is, just be prepared, if council doesn't have a line item in their budget for that, it may be get removed. We're all under that understanding?
Would that come back to planning?
It would have to, because we're in charge of this plan, right?
No, because after you guys, you guys, we're going in a circle here, after we submit it, it goes to plant, it goes to council. And it's no different than us submitting, uh, sign ordinance.
But if, once they.
A zoning change and them not granting it.
But once, once they approve the initial, we own it after that. According to what Rachel read, it's ours. So if we change it, it doesn't have to go back to them.
I mean, the way I read the chart is it would come back, because it's saying, planning commission recommends approval of the capital improvement plan, governing body adopts the capital improvement. It doesn't say alters it or discusses it or changes it, that falls under us, so it sounds like they either say yes.
They approve it or they punt it back to us.
Yeah, that, I mean, at least that's the way I'm interpreting what it says.
Okay, just move forward, you gave your vote, so. Okay, so any more questions on the motion? Can I get a repeat of the motion, Rachel, sorry?
To improve the capital improvement plan with a building item for twenty twenty-two, fifty thousand dollars, and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-seven.
Should it say to approve the plan as presented?
Well, it wouldn't be as presented if you're changing it.
And amending it to add.
It would be as amended.
As amended. But we're approving this plan that's laying here in front of us, and then we're amending it to add fifteen.
To approve the capital improvement plan with the budget, with the building item added.
Could you just make a municipal building, just so that's clear? Okay, roll call?
Um, Rob Penella?
Yes.
Craig Simmons?
Yes.
Here, Tracy Van Kowsky?
No.
Genevieve Rogers?
Yes.
Chris Dilger?
No.
And Rachel is a no.
So, motion carried?
Three, okay. Hmm, it's three to three.
Okay, we've been on, wait, so you, before we move on, so.
She wanted to carry, it was three to three.
Oh, it's three to three, oh, there's six of us, oh, okay, do you wanna move to? And if there are no.
Let's dissect the chart again. Planning commission recommends approval of the capital improvement plan, governing body adopts the capital improvement plan.
Because it's a rush process.
But if you look at step six, it says, planning commission reviews and gives final edits to the CIP development team. It approves it. In step seven, it sends it for.
So it's gotta go back to the team then for the change, that's what this says.
Well, planning commission reviews and gives final edits to the CIP development.
Team.
Back to the committee.
So it goes back to committee?
Yes, final.
I should formally.
Well, but it's final edits.
Final edits, so we tell them, we like what you did, and we made these changes.
So it has to go to the team?
Yeah, it's gonna go back to the committee.
The, the committee, the, the group that you met with, it's gonna have to meet again and make the changes.
So they may not, they may not adapt our thing to, or our recommendations?
I don't think they can. Well, that's what I'm saying, is I don't, yeah, it can't.
It can.
Because it, this commission recommends the approval. Now, they may not like it and it goes back, but it, it's still gotta come back to the team.
Planning commission reviews and gives final edits to team. This is in the original guideline we're in. Okay, then they, what does the team do after they get it back?
That goes back to, come at me multiple times, and I, this is such a rush process.
Yes.
And that's why I'm not comfortable with this, it's too rushed.
It's such a rush process, we really don't know the work by the team.
And honestly, in this, how to do it, it says, um, there should be a training workshop done to know how to develop it and put it, and implement it.
Development team clarifies any issues, finalizes the ratings, and brings the CIP draft forward at the planning commission workshop. Where the draft is presented during a public hearing. Then the planning commission.
Does a public hearing involve?
There's a public hearing next week before the council meeting.
On this?
Yeah, listen, this is job security for people, more security of this, you know, leaders.
It says a training session maybe.
Are we looking for job security?
No, I'm just saying, out there in the world, I'm just saying, out there in the world, not here, not here, no, in the world. Okay, then it works with the.
Eight thirty-nine, we need you, Chris.
I think there's something with this one.
Okay. Part, one of the rules of the planning commission is they adapt the plan and request the governing body to consider, to consider incorporating funding for the first year projects into the budget plan.
So to move forward, if possible, is there something that Rachel, Chris, or Tracy would approve, to change the, the motion to, to approve?
My biggest issue.
Anything sitting there?
My biggest issue is timing, this is all being forced bad, and I don't like that.
Rachel?
Meaning, I don't.
Because every time that document is read, we, we find another paragraph, you know, now it, it could be considered, now it.
May be.
May be considered.
I agree, I'm not comfortable with the timing, I'm not comfortable with the one-and-done meeting process, I'm not comfortable that we didn't really have any input into it and we're supposed to be responsible for it.
I think a little bit more education on the piece prior to it coming is, is one of my things, and then the second is, my fear is, if it passes with the two hundred fifty thousand, and they don't save the two fifty, that people are gonna be disappointed and it doesn't make sense. Because that, we can fiscally make that happen.
And honestly, not one person at this table really can give me a definition of what this actually is for. Grants, okay, cool.
Well, I think there's some other reasons why we have to have it in place too, there's other rules or number at a state level, but it's irrelevant.
All right, is there a motion?
To adjourn?
Uh, we can make a motion to adjourn and then pick this meeting up when we get more information in a week or so, maybe before the meeting next week, um.
Motion to table till either next month or a possible special meeting to.
Monday, we do this to Monday?
It's coming Monday?
Because that would be before the meeting, if there's, if there's a deadline to be met, are we willing to meet on Monday so that they can meet their deadline?
I'm just gonna say this, if we do it on Monday, doesn't it have to go back to the committee too?
You're right, forget about that.
It would have to be sometime between now and Monday, the committee would have to meet to make the changes and then present back to us.
And I would think, I think I got a very, well, if I, the person that's going, I think I have a very strong, uh, knowledge of the will that you want two hundred fifty thousand put forward, you, you.
We want the building to appear as a.
Significant.
It's gotta be substantial.
As an item, it'd be reasonable, for me personally, there's no sense, you know, throwing a nickel at something that's not.
Twenty grand ain't enough, and.
So what happens if they don't create with, happens if they say yes, and they adopt it, and then that a budget line item isn't created for it?
Then I'll do the same thing that you do with the sign ordinance. I mean, really, I just, it is what it is, there's nothing I can do about it, right?
I agree.
So, I mean, I guess I just get over it.
Right.
So our, and, and, but sitting here as an obligation to, oh, sitting here and not recognizing that this is down the road. You know, I feel absolutely responsible to do something about it.
I didn't vote no for that, I voted no for the brushed.
I just, I know, I, I understand.
And I don't disagree with you, but are you willing to, um. Like I said, let's put it on our agenda next month, that we want financial representation here, and we might have a discussion about what is it gonna take to get a building, how are we gonna make that happen?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's fine with me, I don't, it, it just, it needs to be addressed and.
Well, I would like to have direction, if, if this is a rush and it has to happen for next Tuesday's council meeting, is everybody willing to get together on days in order to make, make that happen, if that's, or do we just say? or do we just say, you're not gonna be able to get it for this year, let's shoot for next year?
I guess I have, and I, I don't know if it's, it's right to ask this question, does Monday move anybody sitting at this table? I mean, is Monday any less rushed than today?
Maybe.
I, I, I wanna hear exactly, I wanna hear exactly what they're gonna do with this chart, this budget. I wanna know how, how are they implementing that, where is that gonna play in the big picture of the expenses and revenues in the village?
And you guys actually have, it's, have been money spent during the process on those projects, where I'm.
I'm sorry, when can we?
Right, this is at the table, so we had to say this, so we need to get that defined, for sure.
Sounds like that.
Can we, I mean, can we approve this as is now, put it on the agenda again for next month? And change the numbers for twenty twenty-three and forward?
Yes.
So it'll be approved, it can go to council, we won't have to go back to the, the special committee, but then we can change it again in four weeks from now.
Yes, but someone will need to come to that meeting and offer the training session or.
It, it does.
Yeah, it says a training session may be needed to be held before the process begins if a capital improvement program is new to the community.
What was that?
It says a training session may need to be held before the process begins if a capital improvement program is new to the community.
That would've been a good idea.
It was in our guide that we were given in February.
It, it seems like if we have final say, or we don't have final say, there's like three different passages right out of that.
Yeah.
That gives us.
We have final say, but it's the committee that drafted it.
And you added what they presented to you, which we just did. The only thing that's, we don't know if that's doable, what we're doing, cause we don't know how this, is either this a savings account, or is it expenditures, or we don't have a fi, a, a lock answer on what the heck the numbers are.
These are expenditures, cause these are projected cost of village expenditures.
But wouldn't it, if you're taking the money and putting it into a savings, wouldn't that be an expenditure to save it? We're pulling it out of that year's budget.
But that's not what this says, here's the Planning Commission role in this, right?
Yeah.
Samples, okay. Works with the planning group during the planning development, we missed that, conducts workshops if necessary, reviews the, reviews the planning group's recommendations, receives public input, conducts a public hearing, adopts the plan, and requests the governing body to consider incorporating funding for the first year projects into the budget plan. But it doesn't say anything about us altering their plan.
And when was all that?
Well, we all received these, February was it?
February twenty-first, I think, is the date.
So we had, we had a merge in April, man.
February twenty-third. Wrote that stuff down, thinking it might be a question.
I haven't even copied the email.
Well, we were given that, had February, we were given this at our primary meeting.
I remember, it was at a meeting, it was at the table or something. I don't remember the month though, you guys took it, I don't remember.
I just hope it was in our primary hat.
Okay, is there a motion? Okay, I'll try this once for the sake of, I'll make a motion to recommend the, uh, capital improvement plan with fifty thousand dollars on an additional line item for, um, municipal billing across the board, uh, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, um, with the promise for consideration to review the number to go up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars next year and going forward. Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Roll call, any conversation, discussion?
It was the same one, it was the same motion.
I just put fifty thousand across the board instead of two fifty.
I would've just put.
I just put fifty thousand on everyone.
I would've just put fifty the first year, and he, so it's been years, but.
I want.
I mean, Ann did say that we can address this for next year, starting, you know, with the next meeting, there is.
Why don't we do that, because you guys twenty-two is, that's what we spent.
That's my motion, I just want the two hundred and fifty across the board minimally, and then two hundred and fifty thousand to be considered for future years. Not on it, no, not in.
I second that.
Uh, Craig, yeah?
Oh.
Any more questions? Roll call.
Geneviq Radzic?
Yes.
Uh, Craig Sims?
Yes.
Uh, Rob Pennell?
Yes.
Chris Dilvert?
No.
Tracy Bonkowski? Rachel Whitsett?
Okay, motion failed.
Run it, Rachel, motion.
No, no.
Do I have to try again, or give, let's move on.
I'll give it a nice shot.
Okay.
That's a lot of writing I got going on over here.
Uh, my motion would be to approve the plan as presented, amending the, uh, the budget to add a line item for building, municipal building, at twenty thousand across the board, removing the twenty thousand from sidewalks, making that ninety thousand.
I don't know what you came up with, sidewalks has to come from specific funding.
Active that, specific allegation sidewalks? I don't think we really have to get into it, people, I'm sorry, is there a second on your motion?
Well, they spent a lot of this sidewalk when he's coming out of the general fund, correct? Besides.
I think sidewalk comes from Act fifty-one, doesn't it?
Act fifty-one in France.
But I thought they were adding money out of the, out of, uh, general fund for it as well this year.
Can we get a second?
Oh, about this year.
I'll second the motion for the conversation, but. Chris?
I'm sorry.
Did you have something? No. I thought you guys were done.
No.
So if. I still want future consideration to move the number to two fifty. For the year, and this, this is a thought, this is a conversation, not put it there.
I think that the conversation comes to this table, I, I think this is.
Signing the twenty across, I just want the conversation part that just needs to be more than twenty thousand in the future. I just don't think this is the place.
I mean, I think we should do everything that we, as on that list, I think next month, we have it set up, it's possible to have the training done. A month after that, have presentations from, so we understand the process of the budget, get more input, get whole public hearings, get ready for twenty twenty-three, so it's done according to the document, and everybody feels comfortable. But this, at least gets this going to start, it, it puts the building in everybody's face, that, and recruit plan that is a lot bigger step than we've ever had on that subject.
Did the committee tell you to tell us to make changes to it, if we wanted or needed to, was that spoken?
No, we didn't even get into that, I mean, like I said, it was forty-five minute meeting of, um, and I wasn't in on a portion that, you know, Dan was in about, you know, creating, you know, the projects. I wasn't even in March, but Mark had a meeting prior to this, in order for, for Parks and Rec to discuss it, you know? Our meeting was already had.
Did you accept the conversation for January fifty? Just the conversation?
Oh, absolutely, I think.
Any more questions, comments? Can you reread the motion?
To approve a plan as presented, amending to add line item for municipal building for twenty thousand dollars, removing the funding from sidewalks with future consideration to move the amount to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year.
Yes.
I can read my own change match.
It's better than what I got here.
I still don't know, Rachel, do you know by chance, can we do sidewalks?
I don't think we can.
I don't think we can, and I think it complicates the motion if we're doing something we can't do, I think we're.
How about we just say it has to be removed from other funds?
Yeah.
For the committee to Dallas.
Good.
How's that?
Good. Any questions?
Everybody can give three, great.
Roll call.
Uh, Rob Pennell?
Yes.
Geneviq Radzic?
Yes.
Craig Sims?
Yes.
Chris Dilvert?
No.
Tracy Bonkowski?
No.
And Rachel Whitsett?
Okay, we're just gonna move on, cause they're not getting anywhere, would anybody, um, uh.
So, do we wanna make the appointment?
Yeah, I'm gonna get there, let's discuss what we're gonna do with this first, so, as far as.
Motion to table.
Well, um, yeah, is there a second on our motion to table?
Uh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Um, let's discuss before we move on to the appointment, what our expectations are as far as moving this forward. Um, obviously, um, we want more information, uh, wait, you know what? Let's, let's go to this appointment first, just so that this person, whoever is this person can write the messaging, okay, so.
I'll make the motion to appoint Rob Pennell as the, um, what do we call it?
Sucker.
Uh, member of the Capital Improvement Plan Committee.
Is there a second on that?
A second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried, so messages.
So, it came.
Oh, Rob's listening, okay. Um, so messaging for, to Rob for moving forward.
So obviously my question is.
Sorry, I thought you were asking. Just for me, does anybody mind if I just record this tonight, in case I screw this up? So you, I get to write what you guys say.
We want the building, um, to be part of the car, I'm serious.
Yeah, but I think there's a whole lot more questions to that, isn't there?
My question is, what are they going to do with this?
Hang on a second.
Okay. Want me to write this question down for you, Brad?
Okay, shoot. I just, I wanna make sure I do the break.
Actually, you know what, I hate to do this, Rachel?
We'll go on that.
Can you note them for the record?
Yep.
That might be a good idea.
There you go, then give her a list.
Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll start with, if you don't mind, Rob, we'll start with Chris, then work our way across.
We want the administration building added to our wish list with proper funding, some reasonable funding amount. Um, and we wanna know the responsibility of the Planning Commission, because right now, there is no there.
I didn't hear that, part responsibility of.
This commission.
Thank you.
And do we want that to come from the administration, or we want that to come from whoever does the training for this type of stuff?
It needs to go to the leader of the community, I think, Rob, because it says, isn't, didn't you pick a leader?
Well, there's training, who does the training? It's gotta be somebody that's employed, that makes money.
We don't want this someone to pay me, we wanna know.
Yeah.
What's the responsibility of the Planning Commission?
Unless, why don't we just ask for a legal thing?
Yeah.
I, is, anybody?
Does this save, or does who create it, just like an address?
I think that's from the MML, I think it's from, uh.
MSU extension.
MSU extension.
In the she's station.
So.
That's why I don't give, I, I personally don't give much weight to it.
Yeah. That's why it runs around in circles.
So maybe we should reach out to, um, MSU and MML for their, do they have classes or training on this subject that's.
Maybe.
I'm good with training.
Cause then it's not that, it's somebody else's interpretation, it's actually somebody that's done it?
Yeah.
Yes, no, maybe so?
Sure.
Okay.
Anything else, Chris?
No, okay.
Craig?
Um, the training was my question, um, I guess unless I, I missed it somewhere where these numbers came from, where the total came from?
Yeah.
Did somebody say, hey, you have million dollars a year, go?
What?
Or is this just?
What is the annual budget of the village?
I don't know.
Maybe I had it in the description.
Anything else, Chris?
No.
Um, education, which we already got down there, um, you know, to caveat Chris's, you know, I, I minimally two hundred and eighty thousand, should be more, but that's fine, and then, um, I think we should have Sandy at our next meeting. I assume she's in this process of numbers, if she's not, then, you know, we'll buy, I would assume she is, and then, um, present the plan. And more clarity on, as everyone else has said, more clarity on the process, but not opinions of the process.
I'm just acting on what you guys say at this point.
John? Tracy?
Um, I, I just want more clarification, it, it, to the extent of they created the, this budget, do we have to accept what they created, or? I don't know how to articulate it, can we just change it, and then are they going to follow through with it? Because I can't answer that question, you know, I kind, I kind of put, like a council member thought, I can't answer that, I don't know what they're gonna do.
Well, was this discussed at prior?
No.
At the budgeting of this?
No, no.
So I think I understand what you're saying, these are actually direct numbers right out of the budget.
Yes, this is money they have already spent or are going to spend when fiscal year ending twenty-two is done.
But it's not, it's, it's not the total, obviously, budgets for those areas, it's just part of.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Cause that's why we're saying Parks and Rec is twenty-five grand, that's their total.
That's their budget.
Budget for the year.
And that's why, if we do change it, is the group gonna be satisfied when that, those marks aren't hit?
That's probably another question.
Well, that's a question for this group.
I mean, if you're not, you just say no, right?
But I mean, once you approve the plan, you're gonna make those yearly marks?
I understand, but, say the next.
Once you approve the plan, you have to make those yearly marks, and then that's banked at that point, and then it can be changed.
I don't know, he says they have to, that's, that's one of my questions.
Yeah, is this a guide, or is this not the?
It's a guide.
But in two thousand and twenty-four, you decide, oh, we don't need anything to do with EPW, we banked a hundred and twenty thousand, that money's still available to move around?
No, I think they spent it in their yearly budget.
Like any budget.
That's how I interpret it.
Like any budget, I mean, there's not an absolute, cause you don't know what the unknown is gonna, so there's always budget amendments. How would we like to hear, you know? We could conceivably get a grant where, of course, they park the rec, and that grant is a fifty-fifty max, and we need a hundred thousand dollars for Parks and Rec to obtain all the things that we have with our wish list.
Soft landing.
So of course, you know, uh, we're going to set aside twenty-five, so we gotta come up with fifty, you know, to, you know, and so it's always gonna have, it, it should have that to go, you know, you know, to do what's necessary to.
But who makes those changes, where are they made?
Oh, the council.
For this, for the capital improvement portion?
The administration is responsible for the budget.
So they can, say your scenario came up, they gotta find a way to come up with that money to match that, because it's not in these funds. So they can't steal from these funds to do that.
Sure they could.
Yeah, they could.
Absolutely.
The only one that couldn't touch is the fire, and maybe sidewalks and roads, but, I mean, they could move parks.
They could touch the fire, if it's not part of the village.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, they could trust, like, the one, the, cause aren't they getting a mill from general fund?
No, all the mills collect, uh.
Didn't, isn't fire receiving general fund?
No, no, it's only what they collect.
Oh, okay, I thought they were getting money from general fund. Oh, okay, I thought they were getting money from general fund.
I mean, they'll pay for things, that's a good example. Maybe the general fund will buy things the fire department needs that's not coming out of their budget, so same thing, what Chris just said, it's always fluid in your budget.
Hey, Rachel, any, are, are you done, Chris?
Yeah.
Hey, Rachel?
No, you guys coming online? Do you want me to read them back what I got?
Uh, probably, likely to.
Okay, um, so I have seven, I have administration building with proper funding added to the list, what's the responsibility of the planning commission in the capital improvement plan, training, where the numbers come, where the numbers and the totals come from, minimum of $250,000 for the building, um, Sandy and President Hyatt are at the next meeting, and clarity of the process, is there anything else that needed to be added?
I think we should just add, because it is a sticking point at the table, is, as just a note, the desire to have been more involved and the desire to have had a, a longer process. Okay.
Noted.
I will send you an email with all this, Rob.
Okay. Moving on.
And just for my clarification, there is no way that this is gonna be approved for June, or for May's council meeting, right? You know, anybody see a, a way that they're gonna come about approving?
I'll try this one time, just for the sake of, if we wanna go back, because it's $1 under the first item.
No.
No? All right, then I don't need it.
No.
Are you, is any... You know, okay, done.
And, and you're out. So come back with answers soon.
I will say that I will be at the council meetings. And I wouldn't be surprised if that was adopted.
Yeah?
We can't adopt it without the planning commission adopting it.
That's the title.
That's what the rules say, right?
I know what the rules say.
Okay.
You know, like we talked about the sign ordinance.
This is, this is just like Abidacastel, back at third base, baby.
So I will say that the committee somehow meet before the next council meeting and planning commission can meet again to have some of these, these addressed, then yeah, they could go to May.
I would make a suggestion of this, perhaps what we do is have, if it's possible for everybody to meet, to have a parallel meeting with the committee here to make, to have, here's our meeting, here's their meeting, here's our meeting, we adjourn our meeting, you know...
Well, have them adjourn their meeting and then have them...
Have them adjourn, yeah, so if we could find a night where the committee could meet and we could meet immediately following, say, six and seven...
How about Thursday, I'll bring the margaritas, a single de mile.
Oh, no. I'd love it, you guys here are my single de mile.
Total joke.
That's a family event in my house. I, I try to sing on that day if you guys wanna tune in.
I do, I'm available all, all this week and up until the end, so...
I am not available Thursday, unfortunately, but...
You can have a lot of margaritas.
Tomorrow, May the 4th, I can't do that. I have six movies I gotta watch.
I mean, we could shoot for Monday.
Six movies?
I mean, Monday would be sufficient, it, right, because it's, if, if both parties are there, but we have to find out that the committee can make it.
Is there any time, like, is anybody available at an earlier time than six, is there 3 o'clock in the afternoon or...
Yeah, I don't know, I couldn't do that, I, I probably can. This week.
Oh, elementary?
I work, yes.
Yeah. So the earliest we could meet, if we're trying to slide something in, would probably be 4:30, 5 o'clock?
I can do that, but we need the committee to meet first, right?
Yeah. I mean, I'm pretty much available, what about weekends, does anybody wanna meet on a weekend?
I'm not here.
Okay.
So it really sounds like...
Friday or Monday.
Friday or Monday.
Okey-dokey.
So maybe see what the committee can do and we'll see if it's worth, if it, if it's doable.
What does Mark do, is he out there at home, got a guy?
He's kinda hard to, he's busy, he has stuff, plus kids, so I don't know, I don't speak very well.
I was just curious, so...
He can usually rearrange his schedule.
Yeah.
He's pretty accommodating, usually. I say that now, he's gonna be busy.
I'm guessing Dan and Marcus, obviously, you know, are here here today anyways.
Yeah, just Thursdays, my, I'm not available Thursday.
Single de mile.
There you go. Okay, Tracy, you look like you have something to say, did you not?
Uh, no, I'm just waiting, hold on.
Okay, management report, John, yeah?
John is good.
Oh, fine.
John is, John is good.
He's not, because his drink is gone. Public comments on non-agenda items? Uh, call from the table?
Nope.
The only thing I have to say is, let, let, let's get the building discussion on next month's calendar.
Oh, on the agenda, is that what you think?
I'm not, I, I don't, you want that, so I'm requesting...
Is that what you're suggesting, like, we put on?
That's what I'm suggesting, okay.
But, um, who did you get that...
On our agenda for next month.
So Tracy's requesting an agenda item.
I'm not requesting an agenda item, I'm asking Jen...
You want to ask me if I'll request an agenda?
No, I'm, I'm saying, you feel strongly about it, so let's get it on the agenda, if that's what you wanna do.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yep.
Um, okay, anybody else call from the table? Motion to adjourn at 9:11.
Oh, let me do that. That's our...